The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, residents are reminded to sign in. Sign in, speak during citizens' requests, speakers are allowed three minutes, and we send official comments. All meetings will be recorded auditorily and visually. Also prior to the next meeting, we have an executive session, there's a certification issue. Okay, no problem.
Uh, Ms. Bofler, how you joining us this evening? Mrs. Depew?
Here.
Mrs. Iker?
Here.
Mr. Bchetti?
Here.
Mrs. Thomas?
Here.
Mr. Shoveroski?
Here.
Mr. Beep?
Here.
Mayor Noff is also absent this evening. Mr. Furman?
Here.
And Mr. Russman?
Here.
This is amazing. We don't intimidate anybody. I was just saying to our solicitor, uh, four or five years ago, before we did all the, uh, engineering feats and articles we performed over at Dover now and all the things that happened, with the mind brain we've had, this place would have been packed, this would have been packed. So, kudos to all the members of the council in particular, and Scott, and everybody who was involved, so. It's so nice to see everybody in this. Okay, then, we're gonna move right on. Bills and payroll, your sorts?
Uh, administrative services, Mrs. Depew.
In order.
Planning and zoning, Mr. Bchetti.
In order.
Uh, public safety, Mr. Beep, in order, Bchetti.
In order.
Public works, Mrs. Iker.
In order.
Recreation, Mr. Shoveroski.
In order.
Storm sewer fund, Mrs. Iker.
I'm not in order because I still need a, um, a, a, an amortization table of the entire twenty twenty-four. There is not, and there isn't scheduled for here, because they provided the original one with the loan document. Yes, the original one with the loan documents has us at the worst-case scenario, which is over eight percent interest, which we, I certainly enjoyed that we do not have that. And the fact, the matter is, in, in the budget, we are budgeting for it to in- increase, eh, either in, um, in interest payments, or if we were planning to, I suppose, advance the principal, or perhaps there might be a balloon payment. I, I don't know, but it, the, this is getting to be a thing every single time, that, um, oh, we need that, eh, why isn't there any certainty about, um, eh, this particularly thing? Because this is a, a, a loan of, um, eh, a substantial balance of o- over two million dollars, and I don't know exactly how much that may be, because I don't have a, a regular statement of, um, in- interest, to how much principal is to have been paid thus far, um, eh, and none of these things are, are at all available to me. I cannot provide you something that doesn't make sense. I, I would please ask that, um, uh, West Banko would provide such documentation. Is that the direction of council?
I don't see any further.
I, I don't understand where you're, and also, if things are not in order, we cannot pay this, is that how I understand it?
Other members of the committee. Commissioner Furman?
Well, at the end of the day, it's, it's a vote of council to pay customers bills for each individual member, so they may wish that. So, you know, they kind of look into that. At the end of the day, you know, you're gonna have a, a lot of emotions. Well, she's, I think, you know, Mrs. Iker's not, her only issues will want item on the list, not the entire.
Yes, 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 that, that's the issue, that there is absolutely no receipt for such a substantially large payment that we project to i- increase for reasons unknown, and no one has been able to, to present any documentation or to explain to me as to why this has been projected to increase in, in twenty twenty-four, and, and I am definitely appreciative that, of, of West Banko to, to not go ahead and charge us the, the worst-case scenario of eight percent interest. Um, however, I am aware that we are five years into a, um, five-year loan, not, eh, where, um, it would change eh, interest rates every five years, and where, where are we in this cadence? Those are the, all the unanswered questions, and i- if, if I could have e- either some documentation or some answers from staff, or even some eh, individual, um, availability to, to be allowed to go down to West Banko to, to eh, introduce myself and resolve this myself, because I know for certain that past council members have had conversations with this Banko staff on behalf of the borough despite not being of, um, eh, the chair of the, the presidency.
Well, I guess the question is, um, can we just simply ask West Banko? I mean, she's in charge of the sanitary sewer fund and storm sewer fund, but if they'll just, whatever she wants, I don't, just request it for me.
That's a good question. I, I can't figure out what you're asking definitely.
I think we're all confused what she's asking.
Ah, I, I'd like to, like, have a meeting.
Could you write it up for us for the next meeting, so that we have a chance to look at it ahead of time and, and try to figure out what, what you're asking?
Okay, well, sa- since it's not at all possible to, to get a- any sort of documentation of an automatic drafted bill that comes out of, of a budget, and I, I'm in charge of that area of the budget, I would respectfully request that, since the staff is not eh, um, a- able to, to provide me additional information, that I, I be empowered to set up eh, an appointment with West Banko for myself to, to go down there and ask these questions.
That, that's fine.
An answer, I think, but.
That's fine.
Then we don't have to train them. You could, I, I think that's a fantastic idea.
Yeah, I, I, I would love to do that.
Yeah, if we do, she can go down to West Banko, and then they, their hands are tied to do whatever they need to do. I, I would think that's.
Why are we hiding here? Eh, and, uh, other past, eh, council people have been empowered to do this, eh, but maybe specifically.
I motion, I motion, I motion that we let Bethel and Iker go down to West Banko and ask whatever she has to ask on the behalf of Whitehall Council.
No.
Yeah, I would need a second.
You'd be allowed to do, but you have to vote to add it to the agenda first.
Oh.
Okay.
But it's not, it's not a cost.
It has to be specific.
Yeah, okay. So it's not.
But it really, you have really problems solving it. It's not, it's not, but you can certainly make a motion out of it.
Uh, I second to, to add that on to the agenda for the next meeting.
Okay, you got it first, good. All the papers out?
Aye.
Aye.
Close.
Well, I think we're just gonna have to do this every single meeting, just have her go down to the.
Close, close.
Uh, sanitary sewer fund, Mrs. Iker. In order. Local fiscal recovery fund, Mrs. Depew.
In order.
Capital projects fund, Mrs. Depew.
In order.
Uh, I ask for a motion to approve, uh, bills on the bill listed April third, twenty twenty-four, from the general fund totaling twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and twenty-seven dollars and sixty-eight cents. From the storm sewer fund totaling twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and eighty-three dollars and forty-three cents. From the sanitary sewer fund totaling one million, one hundred and ninety-two thousand, two hundred and fourteen dollars and seventy-seven cents. From the local fiscal recovery fund totaling one hundred and seventeen thousand, one hundred and thirteen dollars and fifty-four cents. And from the capital projects fund totaling eight thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars and forty-eight cents. So moved.
Second.
Motion's made a second on the third side.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries.
I also ask for a motion to ratify checks and transfers.
Yes, yes. I, I didn't hear a no.
I would also ask for a motion to ratify checks and transfers from the general fund in the amount of fourteen thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars and one cent, and from the payroll fund totaling sixty-five thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars and eighty cents for grand total ratification in the amount of seventy-nine thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars and eighty-one cents.
So moved. Second.
Motion's made a second on the third side.
Aye.
Close. Yeah.
I'd ask for a motion to approve payroll for the payday of March twenty-second, twenty twenty-four in the amount of one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, one hundred and thirteen dollars and forty-two cents.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made a second on the third side.
Aye.
Close. And there is an overturning list attached.
Good, thanks. Before we move on, I just get a, I'm just confused. Why don't you want Beth to go down to West Banko?
It's just some practice that we use here.
Yeah, but you guys complain about, you know, wasting, you know, her time and this and that, she's volunteering to do something that she's in charge of, so I don't understand. Is it just because she simply requested it?
No, just, it, it's not been best practice.
Uh, e- excuse me, eh, I do think that it has been best practice for, um, eh, council individuals to, to go down to West Banko and have personal appointments.
Did I ever go? No, but I was, I'm charged.
I've never been one.
But that doesn't mean I should. The information's, like, she's.
But I don't think any of us should individually be doing those things.
What?
Eh, so, I, I should not care that we, we have a, a significant, um, discrepancy in the amount that, that we had budgeted for, and that's a- above our, our monthly payment.
Yeah, we already made a motion on this, we're gonna move on. Okay.
So there's no, they should just, just pass practice, that's all.
Minutes, uh, approved events.
Motion, please.
Second.
Motion's made a second on the third side.
Aye.
Close.
Motion, minutes three. Okay, mayor reports, this mayor's not here, and I normally am the mayor. And Chris is thinking of responsibility today, so he's gonna be our mayor, so I'm just your mayor.
Um, so, the Mar- March monthly report, uh, EMS assists were a hundred and fifty-three, court hearing and pre-child, eighty-four, accidents, fifteen, criminal arrests, uh, twenty, traffic stops, one hundred and forty, traffic details, one hundred and ten, written traffic citations, one hundred and six, written warnings, traffic violations, one hundred and fifteen. Uh, monies collected and turned over to the borough during March twenty twenty-four was four thousand, eight hundred and fourteen dollars and ninety-five cents, and that breakdown is as follows. MVC, MVC, which? Motor vehicle. Uh, from district magistrate, one thousand, three dollars and seventy-two cents. Crimes code and code violations from district magistrate, eight hundred and fifty-six dollars and fifty-one cents. Parking fines, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Report copies, two hundred and forty-five dollars. Fines from clerk of courts, one thousand, eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars and seventy-two cents, and solicitor mechanical license fees, one hundred dollars. There were training activities, uh, in the past month. Sergeant Bowman and Sergeant Mayber attended a three-day seminar on the stress and traumas of law enforcement sponsored by the PA State Mayor's Association. Officer Losstetter attended a five-day firearm instruction course to assist with department training activities, and dispatcher Bulkey and dispatcher Morello completed APCO law enforcement communication recertification. Spring weather has significantly increased animal complaints about raccoons over the past two weeks. A reminder to residents that trapping services are available throughout South Hills Cooperative Animal Control, and residents can call the Whitehall Police Communication Center at four one two, eight eight four, eleven hundred to request a trap through animal control. Uh, the Baldwin Whitehall School District will be conducting safety exercises at Baldwin High School on Friday, April twelfth. The exercise aims to test the school district's preparedness and emergency response procedures with a particular focus on intruder situations. Members of the Whitehall Police Department, Baldwin Police Department, and Allegheny Emergency Services will be on scene for the drill. And that is all I have to report.
You still have another F R. Great, great report. All right, solicitor's report.
Uh, first, first, I do not have. Engineer's report, this there. Thank you, Mr. President, um, uh, this is all listed in our April third, um, uh, report to council. Under item two, under the operation and maintenance plan under the twenty twenty-three CCTV inspection contract, uh, work has continued, as has, uh, recently in the last few months. Uh, Roto River Service Company has submitted another pay application for work completed to date. We reviewed that, uh, but it appears that they're within the eighty-six percent of completing. The application has been reviewed and is in order, so recommended motion is to approve pay application number four in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, eighteen dollars and sixty-seven cents for twenty twenty-three CCTV inspection contract to Roto River Service Company.
So moved.
Second. Motion's made a second on the third side.
Aye.
Close.
And what's gonna happen, um, so they're eighty-six percent complete, so we're pushing to have, have them complete that. Once, um, uh, the contract is complete, this is the information that is used for the excavation contracts and the lining contracts, um, the spot lining contracts. So without that, we can't move on to the rest of the maintenance program. Under item, um, oh, on the same item two, on the second sheet, um, the Baptist Road, uh, backwater valve, um, we did prepare a request for proposals for the installation of a backwater valve at fifty-three hundred Baptist Road. Um, the reason for that is, is that the cost for that is underneath the bid threshold of the twenty-two thousand and change for twenty twenty-four. So, we solicited, uh, four quotes, um, only two were received in return. Roto River Service Company had the lowest bid of thirteen thousand, five hundred. Sole eye construction was the, um, second, um, contractor to return the proposal, and their price was bid two thousand, two hundred. The recommended motion is to award, uh, the backwater valve for fifty-three hundred Baptist Road, um, to Roto River Service Company in the amount of thirteen thousand, five hundred.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made a second, any questions?
Uh, yes, yes, I do have a question. Is, um, I, I'm having trouble finding, um, this specifically on the, the project, um, descriptions on, um, either the sanitary or the storm sewer budgets. Um, is, is there, um, something that I'm missing, or perhaps it, it's under a different name? Um, might it be part of the high grove improvement?
Yeah, we started the high grove. They should use backwater valves.
Backwater valves, yes, I see it. Backwater valves, fantastic, yes.
All right, motion's made a second, we have, uh, uh, wait, motion's made a second, right? All the papers out?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item four overlooked part is that I have council, council update. Uh, work has continued on the concrete stairs. Um, the lumber package, uh, for the, uh, registry facility was delivered late last week. Even with the weather, uh, they have been framing, um, the, the registry, so it always won't end next week, it should be under roof. Um, Ramsey Construction is a subcontractor, the earthwork is nearly complete. They are in the process of applying an excess material offsite. They've also, um, continued work on the storm sewer system, and, um, this week started, um, construction for the underground stormwater management tank. Um, so the work in there has been proceeding, uh, even with the, with the weather. Under item twelve, on page three, uh, just a good, uh, council reminder, uh, the bid opening for the twenty twenty-four maintenance program will be next, uh, Wednesday, April tenth at eleven o'clock, with the, uh, next potential award at the next council meeting on April seventh. Under item sixteen on the last page, the Wayman Run Sewer Emergencies, Emergency Sewer Repairs. Uh, just to let council know, um, the Roto River did, um, make the repairs, um, in the Columbia, uh, Columbia Gas Right-of-Way. Uh, what was, uh, what we determined, what we discovered was that there was an existing, uh, lateral for the home that had been removed years ago in that, in that vicinity. Um, it was disturbed during the, um, construction of the pipeline, and that is the reason for the, um, draining of the stream. So that, that work has been, um, completed. Um, also work on the downstream manhole below that, Columbia Gas Right-of-Way. It has been repaired, uh, a lateral has been encased as well as a lateral a hundred and fifty feet upstream from that. So, if all goes well, you may have noticed that their equipment is still on site. If all goes well, um, they may, uh, complete the, uh, last remaining forty-foot section upstream from where the material or the equipment is being stored, and it may start as early as Friday. That's all I have to say, there are any questions?
Okay, moving on.
Uh, I do have a question for the engineer. Yes, um, eh, so, one route to the Tegi's, um, I, I did notice it looked like, um, a, a good deal of, um, eh, excavation that, that was having, uh, being done, eh, to, to the, that street's end, um, eh, with just about every, a single house, um, eh, dug, dug up. I, I would, eh, assume that this might be, um, uh, perhaps a, um, Pennsylvania American Water project, or, or I'm not really sure of what, um, but. Are you aware of that?
It's not a borough project.
Okay.
I don't know, also off the top of my head, if it is, um, a gas company, it could be, um, P and G, or if it is PA American. You say it's on water?
Yes, on runner, eh, down, um, eh, to its end, uh, starting on East. So we, we have, um, street signs down, uh, a- all the way down, um, both sides of the street.
We can check the, um, one calls and.
Yes. That, that would be wonderful, yes, yes, um, be, because it, it is, um, I, I would presume so very destructive to, to.
Thanks for that. Okay, moving on to the manager's report.
Uh, quick report, uh, first thing, I just wanna report that the rollout of the recycling motors is complete. Um, we had some minor hiccups, uh, that the staff worked through, uh, particularly in Shadow Long Communities, the agencies over there were really fantastic, very patient with us as we, um, are getting the recycling motors that were mistakenly delivered, removed on Saturday. So, um, other than that, we really just appreciate the president's patience and generosity.
Does that include Foxwood Manor? Cause then I got a call from their H I A regarding now.
Yes, we work with Foxwood as well.
Follow up, uh, we had a resident over in our area that asked, that did not receive one. Uh, we made one call, and within two hours it was already delivered, so, thanks for that quick service.
Yeah, you're welcome, that's a, it was a very good rollout, um, you know, not a big help, but we're getting the work through and resolved, um, who are not currently all the agents we have.
I, I received multiple phone calls as well, um, so, uh, and I want to thank the staff for, um, posting the, the Facebook post regarding the, um, the, the code regarding, um, what, what sort of lots will, um, qualify for, for just simply not having a compliant place for a, um, larger recycling bin to, to be. So I, I suspect that, um, eh, code enforcement has also been, uh, a lot of, of calls to, to do with that.
Don't believe there's been any abnormal calls in code enforcement now.
Uh, because, I, I believe the, the Facebook post that I'm referring to, um, eh, suggested that people call code enforcement if, um, or, or maybe it's zoning that I might be confusing it with regarding, um, whether or not the lot was of irregular size.
The code itself allows for storage of these tores, and that is handled by the code enforcement office. I'm not aware of any.
So if there's an issue, what do you suggest, call you or call?
Call code, um, but, I mean, we're happy to, to answer all of them, pass them along to the office.
Okay, secondly.
I want to go over and take things.
We'll do our best to get back to residents within one, four, forty-eight hours, but it's not our overall work with.
Do you wanna make, can we make a motion that it's, you have to respond to, between twenty-four and forty-eight hours to every resident?
You gotta make that motion?
Yeah, I'll make that, I'd make a motion to put that on the agenda. And the consequence of not would be, um, you're ineligible for, uh, a rate.
You're gonna get a second, I mean.
I got a lot of complaint, I got a lot of horrible complaints.
You didn't even get a second.
I got a lot of horrible complaints about it, I'm sorry.
And then, yeah, it, it's still, I receive calls, and, and I receive calls. Eh, can we go around those with the rest of council to see, eh, who else receives calls?
I have not received one call at all, not one email.
You pulled us back, right? I have to say, I'm sorry, I'm not interrupting, but I'm in the Shadow Long Communities, and some, one of our people reached out to her, and she was back less than twenty-four hours to tell us that it was being handled.
It's not an issue, okay.
I just had to say that.
I, I just heard a different story, that's fine. Maybe you had a one, it's great, but I had a couple complaints, and that's my obligation as a, as a council person, to make sure that everybody's answered, not just, you know, a particular person.
Well, I don't think she was given a special treatment. I know I'm not supposed to be speaking out, but this is letting it pass.
Then at least send out an email or text message immediately, you know?
She did.
A lot of, a lot of complaints.
She did.
Okay, well, the people, I, multiple people. You're saying one thing, I know.
It's not an issue, it's not an issue. Okay, let's go on, move on.
The second item on my report is in regards to, uh, the security cameras here, uh, on the administration level and the library level. Um, we recently had some glitches with the system, calling in the company to look at them, um, and they have reached, they're actually beyond their end of life. Um, so there was discussion of doing a band-aid fix, um, to the tune of about seven thousand dollars. At that point, we were really looking at a full replacement. So we did solicit three quotes, uh, which I believe have attached in the vendor, in the packet there. Uh, barriers protection systems, uh, is the lowest quote. They also currently manage various cameras for the police department, um, so we're looking at better integration for the whole entire building and the just complex as a whole. So that being said, I ask that council accept the quote for barrier protection systems for N V eight A compliant cameras for the administration and library levels in the amount of twelve thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars and fifty cents.
Can I give an explanation of how these cameras are different than the cameras for live streaming?
They completely separate systems.
So.
But we have the capability to do this system, that records twenty-four hours and it probably.
This infrastructure is already installed, correct?
Correct, this is existing infrastructure.
It's just taking that camera and hooking up a new camera.
Correct, so it'd be, um, replacing the hardware and kind, but also be replacing the server, and it's beyond its end of life, and actually what we're gonna be doing is tying it in to the police department's existing cameras for live feeds downstairs at dispatch. Chief can talk about the, the renovations that we will be doing in-house to give them better twenty-four-seven view of the complex.
This will, this will be the first time that we actually have twenty-four-seven coverage of the entire municipal complex downstairs. We're gonna take advantage of the new public works employee that's an electrician, he's gonna be able to do the wiring for us. We're gonna take advantage of the public works, uh, laborer who also, you call him a carpenter, he's gonna be able to, uh, fasten the superior device to the ceiling so we can put up the full monitors down there so that we can watch, uh, the entire municipal complex. As far as security cameras and live streaming, they are two different technologies. I mean, they're, they're cameras, but they're not the same system.
Well, I'm just, I'm, I'm, I'm happy that we're doing, my, my vote's a yes, but I just would really like an ETA of when we'd be able to live stream these. You know, do we have any sort of idea when, when this could be?
We've been very consistent that it's probably gonna happen in the fall.
This fall, so this fall. Can we put a date on it, a month on it, something?
We can't put a date or a month on it.
Three years, three years.
We're good, okay.
Come on, three years.
Since budget. You don't gotta eat so much. In budget prep, last November, all three meetings, we talked about this, and the claim has always been by the fall of this year. Couple things got switched around because obviously council changed its move. That changes a whole type of equipment and things that have to go in here. Some other, some other things that have come up since council changed its move, I believe a couple council members had talked about maybe installing the smart board, installing monitors from the ceiling so that the public could see documents that we talk about that could be displayed. So, I mean, all of that's kinda taken, taken into the factor of, of, of the live streaming.
Eh, excuse me, none, none of my comments have been at all, eh, eh, and no one has been at all interested in my, eh, comments concerning the matter.
We have, yeah.
So, I, I don't know what committee that transpired in, but it certainly wasn't, um, afforded to public in, in the, um, but, um, be that as it may, um, I, I would propose that this will be a, um, under the public safety budget, that that would make more sense than a, a grounds sort of budget, but the, this is what, uh, is presented to be an emergency, um, fix, but an emergency fix that would be a substantial upgrade for a good long while. Um, and I, I do believe that we, eh, maybe not on-premise, eh, um, cameras uh, for our, our grounds, but we, we did budget security cameras in, in the, the public safety budget, did we not?
This is unrelated to the public safety budget, this is something that would come out of buildings and grounds repairs because the system, we did not know that it was beyond its end of life. So there is money for repairs, which is what's all in there, as part of buildings and grounds.
Okay, I'm on page eight of the budget, where it discusses, um, building a, a grounds, and, um, I, I'm not really seeing a line item for repairs.
Maintenance and repairs, it's a general line item.
Okay, yes, maintenance and. Okay, yes, maintenance and repairs, forty thousand dollars. So I I just wanted to to have it noted that um that our um fire company had a um A H V A issue that um it cost the fire company, not the borough, thirty thousand dollars. And um they they asked for for not a penny, yet um here here we have the administration um asking for um a a large pile of the the maintenance and repairs.
That should keep some next to apples.
I'm just trying, I don't know.
You can vote no.
They're not connected.
I I I'm I'm gonna vote that yes, I I'm actually gonna vote yes, Bill.
I'll motion.
I just wanted to have it, you know.
It was already motioned.
No, no, nobody else. We got a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Okay, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both? Unanimous, good.
I'd like to bring something up, so. If you said fall, there might be live streaming. Can we put it, can I say January? We'll make a a motion that we have council chambers set up for live streaming by January. So you could go to the vendors and say, there's a fire lit under our butt by, you know, council, we need to get this done, we need to get moving. January's plenty of time.
What's the workforce still pretty nice, what are we gonna do? We're gonna make that motion, but if it's not done by January, when do we end it?
What happens whenever, you know, employees don't do things?
Those should dress when these people die.
It's going on three years. I mean, this isn't like, we're not launching a rocket to the moon, you know?
The the biggest part of this whole live streaming endeavor has been making sure that we have the right the right connection coming in from our telecommunications provider.
And you said Verizon, did, or you said Comcast?
Oh, yes, but it took them a year and almost a year and a half of planning to build it to get it here. It's here now. It was installed in January or February.
We did the changeover in mid-February and to I guess go back, Comcast did this at their expense. Um, so the only money the borough spent is once the Comcast, or once the fireworks been brought to the building, we're doing all the internal at our expense. But we did the changeover in mid-February.
And it took pretty, it took us three weeks to switch everything over, could we have a couple of glitches.
Yeah, um now that it is up and running, um the chief has spoken to this before, that, you know, as this enters through the police department, they have additional security needs and concerns that they need to address. Um, the key needs three to six months' time to make sure that the the connection is stable, that the network, um there's no bottlenecks before we add to the traffic that is here. That's kind of the current phase that we're in. Um, as, you know, that is ongoing, uh public works will be doing some other internal construction, um that we spoke a bit about in regards to downstairs. But also, as we move into this building here, or into this room, excuse me. The current, or the old council chambers, that, you know, is on the other side of this door here. What uh our new public works employees actually working on specifically is electric on this wall here. So this door that had previously been an emergency exit to this exit here, uh we are working to make that a closet door now that will house any server, hardware, things that we may need once we talk to to vendors to get quotes. So with that in mind, they're doing some renovations over on that side of the wall here not soon. Um, once they get to a point where you can bring vendors in, the chief is satisfied with their connection and traffic hasn't um impacted their ability to function, we will solicit quotes from various vendors, those quotes will once again be brought to council, we'll have an opportunity to review them. At that point, we can make a selection and we will have a better idea of an installation or installation.
Good, good. Anything else?
No, that's all I have.
Okay, moving on to the assistant. Nothing.
Nothing.
Pretty reports, thanks.
Um, I have nothing to report.
Damn. Okay, recreation, she's so gross, I don't even handle her. She's gonna bail you out again.
I have no report, sorry. Um, pool passes went on sale on Monday, April first. We currently already have a thousand pool passes purchased. Um, our upcoming in-person dates include April fourth from five to seven in the community room and Saturday, April thirteenth from two, from twelve to two in the community room. Our last uh practice for Kids' Steel will take place on Saturday, April sixth at nine AM in the Harrison Middle School track, outdoor track. Um, and then the marathon will be on May fourth. So we are excited for the kids to do that. Um, pool staff orientation is also happening on Saturday, April sixth. Um, we're excited for our pool staff for our first full season at the new pool. Um, water aerobics registration for residents was today. We are offering non-resident registration on Wednesday, April tenth at nine AM. Um, summer camp registration packet s- um went out. Um, registration is coming up. Resident registration is April ninth and eleventh from five to seven in the community room. Non-resident is April sixteenth from five to seven in the community room. If anybody needs a registration packet, they're online as well. Um, lastly, I have been wanting to implement a evening water aerobics class. Um, I was approached by a Zumba instructor, a water Zumba instructor, that is willing to mimic the water aerobic schedule. Um, classes would be from seven to eight PM. Um, that ensures if a non-resident does take the class, that they would leave at the eight o'clock closing time with everyone else. Um, so I am proposing um that we do hire this individual, which would be a change in the salary ordinance um to accommodate hiring her. Um, the math does work out in the borough's favor and will allow another amenity to the residents. So I wanted to see your opinion on that.
I think it's very fun, the strange one.
That sounds very fun.
Uh, yes, I've I've taken part of in um water Zumba and the municipality of the city of Chicago and it it is um a a lot of fun and and yes, even seniors enjoy it, so.
So um that recommendation would go to Ms. Woods too.
We can work to prepare the salary ordinance amendment for the next meeting and get the program up and running.
Great, yeah, great.
Any?
Okay.
I have a question on that, is the Zumba lady gonna bring good music?
So she actually is supposedly has a following of about twenty. She um does Monday, Wednesday classes at West Mifflin currently. Um, and they only do it during the school year, so she doesn't have anything to do during the summer. So there will be a lot of people.
Which draws.
Yes, that's a question.
Yes.
Um, is there anything at all going to be done for the tennis courts? Or anything done to support the goal?
I think that would be into the Parks Committee, so I will wait until um the Parks Committee, if that's okay? At during your report, perfect, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Public Works, you have a second?
Um, I I have one um uh question for for Stone and Hannah real quickly. Um, may may I attend the the recreation uh committee once again? It was um a very uh productive conversation that that I had about um trash and I would like to to continue to work with you to assembling um uh another group of volunteers to to assist with um recycling and supplemental trash for for large events. Um, and I also experienced one citizen phone call concerning the um uh the the guest pass policy. That the, her story is that she's a grandma and she does not have um a an additional house partner to uh um be the uh second resident. However, she has three grandchildren. And I I think that that would be a reasonable accommodation for um for seniors to to be allowed to bring in three or even adults to to bring in three rather than two.
So if I may comment, yes, so the, um, so for the recreation meetings, they are a public meeting, so you're more than welcome to attend. Um, in that regard, I do think some of the comments you have regarding the recycling and those sorts do fall still under the Parks Department, the Parks Committee, I apologize.
Uh, yes, and I'm talking about ad hoc for special events.
Yes, absolutely. So um our meetings are public, it will be on April tenth at seven PM in the um, actually our first meeting will be here, I apologize. Um, and as for the guest passes, um allowing, right now, we don't have a babysitter pass. Um, and that would allow different grandparents and babysitters to accommodate that system of having more than those passes. We have looked into that. We um were looking at the capacity currently um of this full season to then make recommendations to council regarding what could happen. Um, our capacity was very high last year in regards. We were already over a thousand passes in just three days. Um, that being said, if you're you're looking at it, you would be potentially denying access of a whitehall resident to the pool for allowing a non-resident to bring an extra guest. And I think if you're accommodating a senior or a grandparent to bring three, you would have to make that accommodation to everyone. So currently, our rule still stands, it is two guests. If the grandchild is under the age of three, they are welcome to come in free, no matter they're not a guest considered. Um, but unfortunately, that is the rule that's in place right now.
Well, I I did communicate the sentiment that we had to to make sure who who's gonna sign up uh for the passes and it's still too too early yet. And I I did invite this particular resident to attend the um the recreation committee because it it certainly is o- open to um uh the the public. But I I thought for some reason it was on Mondays or?
Because I, did I get my dates wrong? I apologize.
Records, the record meeting I believe is Monday, but.
The eighth, I apologize. I had the test for the the registration, so yeah.
The eighth, yes, 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 I I, yes, I I told her Monday, the eighth at um seven?
Uh, yes, and she can always, um, cause the pool does not fall under the recreation board. Pool falls under pool management and um Ms. Woods. So if she would like to email, that's also something that can be brought up as well.
All right.
Thanks, Anne. Okay, uh, Public Safety, Chief, or something?
Just keep going, we're moving forward.
Okay, we're moving on.
Um, I I I didn't get a chance to to report for um Public Works.
Okay.
Yes, yes, I was a- asking about recreation, so it been, may I take my shirt off?
Sure.
Thank you. Yes, um, I I wanted to continue to disclose, I have not uh spoken to anyone who works in Public Works or anyone else on staff, for the exception of Ms. Woods, since um February, or early February, that is. Um, I as um a a a point, a matter that I I did um receive the the Borough Resolution that that discusses um the the powers of the Borough Secretary um conventionally called as the the Borough Manager and that significantly predates by um, oh goodness, about eighteen years. They um the the signature of uh the the collective bargaining agreement of the union contract uh signed by um the President of of Council and um the the Borough Manager at the time uh as well as um the the original resolution. So I'm gonna ask um Mr. Solicitor to to please look look into this matter and I I'll I'll pass on the those particular hard copies regarding this because uh the um decision to include council in um Public Works hiring matters uh greatly greatly came after the the very um uh um at at the the will of um the the Borough Manager to to make non-legislative decisions. Okay, great. Um, I also wanted to know, while the um Public Works um union contract does permit for a union um uh sort of holiday for the general election, it does not provide a any time off in that union contract for the um uh for the for- fourth Tuesday uh of this um month, which happens to be the the twenty-third for the the primary. Now, um, there actually is um a House bill in uh that is um seriously being considered by the state of Pennsylvania to go ahead and require every employer to give their um employees, whether they be union or not, two hours compensated leave, oh, their choice of uh before their shift begins, which is Public Works is at seven AM to um to to leave early, which would be um one thirty uh for um for the day. And I I would really recommend that this council take the the proactive step to to go ahead and make sure that the that this is done for at least Public Works so that no nobody has to worry about u- us being potentially uncompliant in um the the days leading up to a primary.
That's a contractual thing, right? Okay, moving on, uh.
And um one one more thing. Um, so we we do have a um waste management contract that is under the the Public Works budget. So um uh we had already discussed much of what I wanted to say about that, except for Hillside Meadows. I had heard through just um plain um convention that it the Hillside Meadows uh was was part of our waste management, whether it be the um apartments who get a dumpster in the back or whether it be uh the townhouses who um would, I would presume, get a toter just like every other townhome i- in this area. And it was trash uh day um today in the Hillside Meadows area and there was um a- absolutely no um of new recycling totes. We had a a very sparse amount of borough issued totes. And we had um un- unofficial um trash receptacles. And we also had um raw bags uh of trash laying out there at at the curb. And I I'm, I just would like some clarification as to why um uh the this is different for for these residents who are rental when when an H O A has to to fight for um their their ability to to be exempt from um su- such trash ordinances, meanwhile, every single other um trash um uh con- contract for for any other rental property would otherwise be paid by the landlord. And I I'd like to know first, I I'm so, okay, here are here are my questions. One, is it true that all of Hillside Meadows um i- is um covered under the uh the Whitehall Borough Waste Management Contract, not their own private contract?
No, apartment complexes were moved from the contracts, contracts ago.
Last contract, yeah, two, three contracts.
Quite a lot of them.
Uh, so that's inclusive of Hillside Meadows. I thought that they they had that some sort of exemption. Okay, great. How about the the townhouses though? Why why is it that they they did not consistently receive um the the um official toters?
The ownership company of the complex or space at the time, which was a few owners ago, um did not want them included, or chose to view those townhouses as part of the apartment complex, so they were not part of the borough's contract. That being said, residents over there that have requested toters, specifically trash toters, because we had an abundance of them, we did loan those out to them, um but that was a choice that many managers have made.
Well, it 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 certainly adds to to the the light and I I would um please request that that the these streets be be brought into the fold in fairness to to be just like every o- other um townhome.
That's something that will have to be addressed in the next contract.
Got an increase.
Correct, the borough would then pay the cost of that.
We're five years away from that, so I think move on. All right, administrative services.
No, my turn.
Good, Lady Zodi.
Yes, um.
Yes, you have something.
Um, Planning Commission will meet on April tenth. Uh, the Planning Commission has emailed the Planning and Zoning Committee its recommendations regarding revisions to be made to the limited amusement arcades ordinance. Um, because of that, the Planning and Zoning Committee will have a meeting on April eleventh, um which is a Thursday, at five PM to discuss next steps, be it to make recommendations to council to return um back to the Planning Commission. Uh, the zoning hearing board will meet on April sixteenth. At that meeting, a decision is expected to be rendered on the appeal by Michael Dinger. Uh, the zoning hearing board will meet on April sixteenth, at that meeting, a decision is expected to be rendered on the appeal by Michael Dinger of Dinger Investments Three on a denial of permit application by the Borough Zoning Officer to install three limited amusement arcades in a self-service laundry operation. Uh, the board will also hold a hearing on a variance request by Bernard and Annette Smith of five oh five seven Brownsville Road from Article twenty-five, the accessory structures and accessory uses, um, section one o- one eighty, uh, dot eighty-one, dot three, dot seven to permit a pavilion that exceeds a hundred and fifty square feet and twelve feet in height, and that is all I have to report.
Okay, so now to Parks, that's good.
Uh, I. Not a good today, uh, first one is the, the EWSA asked us if they could build a kickball, and I would like agreement of I don't, this isn't worded the way I would word it.
Can I just clarify a couple things, I think that, you know, from a liability standpoint, the decision is that you have like, the legal recommendations, not that they built it. Is that they did the materials and Public Works would, would do it because, and under that agreement, we have a right, the borough has a right to uh, remove it at any time, they've agreed to maintain it, we can defeat it, defeat it free, things like that. But really, for any reason, if it becomes an imp- impediment to the rest of the park, the borough has full authority to, uh, to take it down or whatnot, so it's not just a donation of the materials that they're giving, we'll make best efforts to, the borough will make best efforts to put up at a reasonable time, but at that point, it's the boroughs to do whatever it will be.
Have they agreed to this already?
I have not heard that from them, uh, they made no progress today.
They may have, wait till they have a meeting.
I'm assuming that maybe something like that, um, so I don't know if someone wants to take action on this now or only till.
You got concerns, Cap, maybe you just want to disoffer the speech.
Okay, we can do that. So we hear from them.
Yeah.
And the second thing I wanted to talk about was the five-year plan, and we talked about it, we have to go ahead with the five-year plan for the parks. Um, does anyone have anything other planned for the first step or the next step, other than finishing overall park? Is that our next step in the five-year plan to finish overall park? The steps down the Spring Valley definitely need done, there's a few other things that, uh, were in the options, should we continue to work on that as the first?
I'd like to see that played short, I mean, before we start on another park.
Before we start on another park or another project.
But as we get into Snyder, you know, the big issue is gonna be pickleballs, we know that, and uh, we wanna move forward on that because.
Just moved into my.
Well, that's one thing we hear a lot about.
Right, what do we wanna do next, and I don't know if we have to decide tonight, but think about it. Do we want to move pickleball court somewhere else so that they have a permanent space in Y-ball? Before we start on Snyder, where do we want, is it more important to change Snyder as, as the current plan, not that current plan, obviously, everything changes, but think about that, let's that's two years from now, maybe three years from now, before we can do it, but we have to, have to have, be looking after that, what do we do first? Pickleball courts, it's the most popular, fastest-growing sport around, do we make some changes to that? Think about it, let me know.
I had an idea, I don't think I brought it up to you, about the moving that one pickleball court and having a uh, a tennis bubble, like how Mount Lebanon has, so you could do pickleball year-round down where the, you know, the tennis courts are now, by the Borough voting down there?
Something to think about.
Hey, did the uh, the school got rid of their um, tennis courts, right? Or actual market?
I think.
They're actually renovating them. At least all the planes come through.
I was gonna say, maybe we can make a deal with them.
Where they're currently at, I think there's six in existence, there's just research, not just research. Yeah, this is my read of the plans, there's non-plans and if they are researched, it's a, it's a, but replacing the company.
But they are open all the time to, to everybody. They're nice that they're there, but the public, they're not.
Just added about six or seven.
But something for you to think about, we don't have to make a decision on it tonight, um, but I'll be, keep bringing it up, what do we do next?
Can I speak into that really fast?
No, no you can't, moving on.
So, to the residents that are here, to the residents that are watching, reach out to one of us, send us an email, tell us what's interesting to you. And not everybody's gonna be happy by whatever the decision is, right? But, we're here to represent you, but if we only hear from two people, we only hear from two people, right?
Right, good point, Lisa. Okay.
I may not get back to you in twenty-four hours, if you plug my voice in, that's okay.
Okay, Allegheny's reports, uh, Allegheny County Borough's sensations.
I have nothing on it.
Nothing? Neither people, they're all good. Uh.
Yeah, Mr. Um, I, what, would you, we'd like to, to discuss the Allegheny League of Municipalities Conference this time.
She said she has nothing on it.
There's nothing new, we'll discuss it when we come back.
Uh, okay, um, I, I just wanted to know that, uh, I, I am attending and I, I just would like to, to know who else was attending.
I'm attending.
I'm attending.
Okay.
Mr. Eath is attending.
So are you going?
Ms. Works.
Am I going to what?
Are you going to ALM this weekend?
No, I'm going to the fall one, I've gone to ALM twice already, it's, it's great, you'll love it, you'll like it a lot, a lot of information and stuff.
I love Stadton since about Friday, one of my day, uh, Ashton Pachalski and Yavroff from my firm will be speaking at one of the sessions, so it's the four o'clock, what on Friday that everybody loves to attend.
A really prime spot.
Stay at the end, it's the best one. I won't be there in the crowd, uh, watching, so. Thank you. You win the point, okay, Chamber of Commerce, um, you have anything?
Tomorrow, um, we need, we'll be having our luncheon at Brentwood High School and we'll be seeing both of the plays for both Brentwood and Baldwin um, that'll be coming up, and then um, we did just schedule a coffee talk to have in Whitehall in the fall to show off our new council chairs.
Excellent.
Okay, uh, check on you, that's fine, uh, we had a meeting uh, last month, is that last month, yeah, last month?
March, yes.
Uh, yeah, right, uh, listen, Hannah, thank you for the setup, okay, uh, a couple of things that came from that particular meeting. One, it's really astounding, you said, uh, seven municipalities signed up for uh, the uh, civil service and uh, looking for police officers and uh, could somebody have applications there?
One.
Not one? Not one? I don't remember when we first started, it's never like ninety, a T V probably goes, hey, we're like ninety something.
We had a, we had a meeting today, they have one application.
Oh, no, they have not been.
Do you know anybody looking for a police officer's job to seven uh, communities or good communities to work for? I think applications are due by next Friday.
That's amazing.
Seven departments are looking for.
This is a big, big problem. It really did affect Western Pennsylvania for a long as time, but it's, it's not.
What's going on?
We think it's some of the national narrative, um, there is, the younger generation doesn't seem to like the ideas of working shifts holidays over time. There's, you know, a lot of people, no matter what generation, a lot of people now wanna work remotely, you can't really work remotely as a police officer. But I do, I do think that the national narrative that has been against law enforcement in the past couple of years, I think it's starting to have an effect on the younger population, you can just go through that.
What was the thing with the dude, uh, wasn't, did he not take any, um, didn't put any people in the police academy, can you elaborate on more on that?
I definitely, I don't really pay that, that much attention to the city of Pittsburgh, we don't, we don't use the city of Pittsburgh Academy, no.
Unfortunately, what we have here, we really are, we got a young staff too.
Yes, we tested over a year ago and we were fortunate, we pulled seventy-seven out. Twenty fifty-eight showed up on the day of take the test, but we have definitely been above average for other similar agencies in Western Pennsylvania.
Uh, the other thing that was brought up, uh, gentleman from West Smithlin was there and they finally got the anticipated demolition started at Strye Ball. Okay, um, they said April seventh, but it, uh, it's, it's starting, it's starting.
It's been started.
So, and there's still having trespassing issues down there, believe it or not, it's a company. If you plan to go down there, I would not recommend it. All right, I'm gonna. All right, I, I mean, one hour tonight, Mr. Mertz, uh, Mr. Nusendi, do you wanna, wanna take over the whole of the show tonight?
Mertz and Matt on March twenty-seventh, um, the biggest topic was Mertz is moving forward with plans to purchase new ambulances. The next steps are for the executive director to review and approve the spec sheet and then present information to the board of directors, hopefully by the next year, the end of April. Um, take up mention this last meeting, um, but cost is estimated to be about three hundred eighty thousand dollars each and depending on how everything works out with the spec sheet, that they are looking to buy uh, two, possibly three ambulances, um, that's still a further consideration.
Any questions for, okay, any new business to be brought up?
I, I do have new business, thank you. Um, so, um, I'm very much looking forward to, to going to the Allegheny League of Municipalities since this is will be my um, first conference of any sort, what it is, is, it is a, a conference of folks who are, will meet in Seven Springs to, to talk about municipality, conference matters, and as it relates to, to the Allegheny region, specifically Allegheny County folks will, will be there to um, e- educate a lot of us, I'm very much looking forward to going to the Solicitor's panel, thank you, Mr. Solicitor. They inflow in it infiltration, which it definitely pertains to, um, sewage, and also they, they add the sand uh, pattern, I will not be staying at the resort, I will not be accept, uh, accepting the spouse entertainment package, I will not be accepting the, the gift bag and I will not be attending any sponsored receptions.
It's totally your choice, okay.
And I also would like to, um, uh, it, it would be nice if the borough would recognize a donation I am making at this time for one hundred dollars in, in, I'm sorry, one hundred and sixty-eight dollars and eighty-two cents, which is the amount thus far that is the, the cost of the um, the movement of the purge documents uh, to a um, secured location and i- if you wouldn't, would mind, um, Mr. President and Mr. Sobrowski, for me to witness signing this check. Because I, I was not given the opportunity to, to look at the, the files in any meaningful order despite my council uh, status. And for, what it's worth, I got numerous calls and contacts for people who want these files to be in the public and published I shall do. These belong to the, the people of Whitehall and I shall give that.
Thank you for the question. Thank you, thank you, Heather, Harry, any other new business? Okay, if not, we need a motion for adjournment.
I'm gonna wait, Darren. Section.
Okay, we have. Officially chose to mediate on five records.